All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Can we please have roll call?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Shacker.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Grineal.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Yep.
And our town attorney Andrew McGuire is present.
All right, item two, discussion items. Presentation and discussions on proposed changes to the Chino Valley Town Code, Chapter Ninety relating to animals.
With me.
Mayor and council, uh, we were here a few weeks ago and chatted about a couple of tweaks to the Chapter Ninety. And you wanted to give a little more time in case we got any input from the community. So Mary Lee did meet, uh, with Mrs. Armstrong, who's was involved in actually writing this original ordinance. And I'll let her explain. They had a couple more, just really minor tweaks to it.
Okay.
And I think we have a slide that we color coded, so you can kinda see what the original was, what the draft was we brought to you at the last meeting, and then a couple of the additional tweaks from this last week.
So on this piece of paper here, in green is what we changed from what you guys looked at last week.
Okay.
So, um, I'm wanting to scroll down, but I can't, or, oh. So I do have control on this. Do I?
You gotta move the little wheel in the middle.
All right. So the at-large, you'll notice that it just said, this is under definitions. At-large, it has the meaning, it says, so the town attorney wanted to put, has the meaning prescribed in ninety point oh five. And so you go to A1 and you read it, but then when you go to A1, it sends you back to definition of, um, under control. So I felt like instead of going to one place and then back to another place to get a definition, I think we should have a definition there.
Okay.
So in green is the definition that I would like to put there, which is the definition that I proposed in the beginning that I sent to the town attorney. So.
It wasn't Andrew.
It wasn't Andrew. It wasn't Andrew. But so that is the
Anyway.
That is the definition that I would like to put. So can I go on to the next one?
Sure.
Okay.
Everybody good with that one? Any questions on that one?
Okay.
Um, nuisance was not, is currently not in the town ordinance. I was going to put it in, and now I've decided to not put it in. So I would like to delete that. It's not even in there to begin with, at this point.
Okay.
Okay. Um, excessive dog noise. Um, the definition in blue, which all of it was blue. I would just like to put a period after dog noises and leave it at that. So I think it's just more simple and we don't need the added verbiage.
Any questions? All right, you're doing good so far?
Wonderful. And, um, under control, this one's kinda funky because it's in two different paragraphs. But what it would read is, when a dog is confined within the real property limits of its owner, or responsible person restrained by leash, rope, cord, chain, or other device, not more than six feet in length, period.
Any questions coming?
What? But, oh, okay. But that's under the body. This is still just under definitions.
How about over there? Any questions? Guys, good. You're doing good, Mary Lee.
All right. And then you scroll on down. This is just a clerical error, um, under A1, where it says defined as ninety point zero one. That should say ninety point zero two. So I said that, or I was told that could probably be changed by Aaron. Um, keep going. Well, we discussed changing from ten to five, but I don't think, um, so right here, that was already in there and I didn't change anything, so it's not in green, but so from ten days to five days.
Okay.
And then there was a concern down in ninety point twelve on A and B, there was a concern of where it says fifteen continuous minutes. And, um, I thought long and hard about this, but I think continuous should stay. Um, it's continuous is gonna have to be defined, if someone wants to argue about what continuous means, I think that's up for the judge to consider.
And I would agree with that, but I, I just for my own purposes, I went on to the longest barking dog I could find, and eight minutes was the longest I could find on YouTube. Eight minutes. So with the word continuous, you would never be able to effectuate that control, because you're never gonna find a dog that goes fifteen minutes.
Right. I, I went back and I brought up five calls that we've had in the past year regarding this issue.
Right.
And all of the, um, animal control officers write up their narrative and they say, I sat here for ten minutes and the dog was barking continuously. It did take a break for one to two minutes and then resumed barking for another ten. So to me, that's continuous barking. It took a break, it had to breathe, it had to get a drink of water, it was thirsty, whatever. I don't know, but
So if he
To me, that's continuous and that's
So if he went ten, took a break, and then you had to ten, section A wouldn't be applicable.
Well, it's
And that's what I wanna make sure. And I don't have a problem with that. I just wanna make sure you have the tools you need to effectuate control should the need arise. And if you get a, if somebody's litigious enough to get a lawyer, and you look at the legal definition of continuous, no pause, break, or, uh, pause on any of it. At least that's what Blacks Law Library says. So when I look at that, I say, hey, there's your loophole to get out. He went fourteen minutes, paused for four, and started over. You didn't make it fifteen. And that was my only concern, is it would remove the teeth that you would have, or you would need if somebody, and then the word gets out, and then everybody beats you on it.
Well, they will now.
Believe me, that's, that's, that's my only concern is just that part, you getting, you know, just getting beat on that because somebody spends the time to argue.
Could we try this and then see if it goes?
You guys want, I'm fine with it. I'm just saying, is it what you really need? Because fifteen is fifteen. Not thirteen, not fourteen, not fourteen and a half, fifteen.
Go, Tom.
As, as it explained to me, the, the changes made by the police department have been discussed. And as far as I'm concerned, we can go forth with those changes, but the remainder of the document has all kinds of strikes and asterisks and stuff, which I understand was done by the attorney, apparently not the one that's sitting here. And the dog people would like to come back at a later date after they've examined the whole document and see if changes or updates or something need to be made to that. But as far as what you're bringing forth, I think we probably go with that.
Any comments over here?
I'm confused.
Are you?
Are we voting on this comment?
No, we don't.
Can't.
Right.
Um, I understand that's what Tom just said.
It would come back to you with, we take out all the strike throughs underlined, so you have a clean document. We, we'll give you a comparison. We can give you the one with all this in it, and we can bring the one without it, and bring that as a voting item.
And this is with more public input?
Let me back up. Is that what you're saying?
Clarify, please.
Yeah, they want the opportunity to come back after these, that the police department changes are made.
Mm-hmm.
And then the whole ordinance, the dog folks, pet folks, will all look at that and see if there's anything left in there that they think needs updated or changed. I'm gonna give them the opportunity to come back if needed at that point.
Okay.
As far as voting on the police department changes, that'll come up during a regular meeting, not this study session, as I understand it.
Understood. I'm just wondering why we're playing back and forth constantly. So can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
Make sure I'm understanding you. You guys are all good with what I want changed, and that will pass, and the changes will be made. If any of the community wants to get together and go over the whole ordinances and make changes at a later date, then they may do that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Except not to this section, right?
Not.
Not to this section. No.
No.
No. That's what I understood.
Thank you.
Mr. McGuire, what do you think about the continuous? You're the expert on that. I mean, the courts normally apply a reasonableness when they look at the totality of the circumstances.
I think providing legal advice in a public session is a great way to give somebody a roadmap, but, uh, that's, uh, it is discretionary. I mean, it's, it's a number of different things. It's, it's like we talked about the prior meeting. Um, our speed limit is reasonable and prudent. You know, there is discretion in all of it. If we want to make it for an undefined period of time and just say for, you know, a period of time that annoys the neighbors, you know, then fine. I think that's, that will be the same, it'll be applied exactly the same way, whether there's a timeframe or not. Of course, somebody's gonna argue it wasn't continuous. If we wanted to find continuous, then we can certainly do that. It seems like we would not wanna do that. But nonetheless, if that's a sticking point, we can, you know, work on that issue. I just don't wanna actually put a, put the holes in the, in the ordinance tonight. That would be.
I mean, I'd like to try it and see. We, that's been kinda the problem in the past, is we don't really have any definition of a timeframe, so we're trying to narrow that a little bit for the court to look at.
On the fly is probably not our best idea. How about I answer that way? So that we can actually talk about it offline outside of the public record, where you're going to then give someone a roadmap to be your ordinance.
So does an officer get to the location, turn on a stopwatch, time the dog?
Their phone, probably.
Or their phone.
I don't think they even wear watches. I'm the only one left. Yeah, they would, they would time it and make notes and
So they're sitting there, timing the, watching the dog, timing the dog.
They don't, they don't go up to the residence, because then the dog would be barking at them.
Right, so they stay
So they get in the neighborhood, they, they hear where the dog is coming from, which was, which was the address that was called in. And yes, they do sit there with their phone and they time it.
Wow. Seems like a waste of time for the officer. I mean, is it, it's officer, right? Cause animal control only works
Could be either.
It could be, depends what time of the day it is.
Right, if it's at night, when you guys are busiest and least staffed. That's a concern.
If he times it for fifteen minutes, what happens then?
Well, depending on the time of the day. So if it's two o'clock in the morning, they're not gonna go knock at that door.
Gotcha.
Um, they're gonna write up their report and they're gonna give it to the animal control officer for the next day to follow up.
Okay. Cause at two o'clock in the morning, if somebody jumps over my back fence?
No.
You've got fifteen minutes of barking and thirteen minutes of you-know-what getting eaten.
Yes. They, they wouldn't go in your backyard anyways, regardless.
Okay.
They would knock on your door or call you.
And that's the education component, cause if it's a first time, then the animal control would follow up with that, and owner could say we had a problem.
Cool.
We need to fix it and we try to, we try to cure that. If not, then we eventually will end up with a citation.
Mary Lee, was that all your changes that you had?
What's that?
Was that all the changes that you had?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would like to ask the three ladies, they're here, right?
I have one question.
If they have any input?
He's got a question.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. No, you're fine. Um, in regards to wherever this may be, um, the animal being restrained, where is it addressed as far as not being tied up for X amount of hours a day? That wasn't, that wasn't something I was changing, so I, I, it's not on my radar. It's, it's not changed. So what, however it reads today is what it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You guys can grab a chair if you'd like, and we'll see if the other ladies have anything they wanna say.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one speaker comment card submitted.
It's okay.
Okay.
You can go.
I just wanna say that Mary Lee was
It goes that booster chair item again. We gotta vote on that.
Pull it out there. Pull it out. There you go.
I just wanted to say that Mary Lee was really easy to work with, and, um, I agree with what she has done. And I know that the people that I talked to in the community, what they were afraid of, we fixed. And it was a give and take, and we're supporting what this change has done. But there are things that we wanna come back and adjust.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And can I just clarify? That was Ms. Donna Armstrong speaking. Thank you.
Yes, it was. I know that voice.
Who's next, Erin? I'm sorry.
Somebody.
Um, I have Debbie Pomeroy.
Debbie. Ma'am? Well, it doesn't have to be. I don't thi, is it three minutes? Does, you people wanna limit three minutes? I'm sorry, does council wanna limit to three minutes?
Yes, please.
Yes?
Okay, they said yes.
Well, then I won't read my, um, be nice thing. Please? I'm, oh, thank you. Um, I'm confused on the changes or what we are allowed to speak on today, since Ms. Armstrong has deemed that we all agree with it. And Chief Wynn says they made, uh, changes. Um, they didn't talk about ninety twelve C, that's totally unenforceable, or it puts too much work on the employees, police officers. And it's unenforceable. How are they going to keep track of days and tines and occurrences and complaints? That's a I'd rather be picking up speeders and drug addicts and doing drug busts instead of worrying about a barking dog. I personally, and I was told not to talk about my experience, cause I own dogs. But a person moved in three doors up, doesn't like my dog. He calls the police department all the time. I see two police cruisers flying up Reed Road. They hide. My dogs aren't barking. And they sit there. And I'm thinking, you guys could be out there doing something else. What are they doing at tw, two o'clock at night, fit, counting to fifteen? No one should have their dog outside at two o'clock at night barking. Okay, but, and during the day, dogs play, the horses tease next door, feral cats go out, you know, run from the barn. Some people are just not happy unless they're complaining. Okay? It seems like you're putting too much emphasis on barking, casual barking, daytime barking. Okay? And there were a lot of other things, as you can see, I've marked it all up, like I normally do. There is, it seems like you're looking at this ordinance as one size fits all. And at the council meeting, last time we addressed this, you talked about, you, someone mentioned the high-density areas. Now, I'm on two and a half acres, and if I'm talking to someone in my backyard, the people behind me can hear me talking. And you're saying the dog noises can't leave the property line. Well, a casual talk with someone standing next to me, my neighbors can hear me, I can hear them. And we're both on two and a half acres and not on the property lines. That's kind of outrageous, quite honestly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That was all that I had submitted. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, anything anybody wants to address? This is, nothing?
I don't think that was part of what Ms. Pomeroy brought up. I don't think that was part of what the police department changed anyway, but she'll be involved in what brought back later on the whole document, so I think it's I think it's okay.
Chief, you and Mary Lee got anything else? You can just go like that.
I just wanted to be a hundred percent clear. We'll bring this back as an agenda item. We'll have in the packet the struck-through, color-coded copy, and then a clean copy that will have everything incorporated. So you can read it clean through. So that's what you guys want. Perfect. Just wanna make sure.
Thank you. All right, item B, discussion on future study session items which council members are interested, interested in pursuing. Excuse me. Who's doing this one? Nobody?
Um, no, Mayor and Council, this was an item that was brought forth by Councilmember McCafferty. Would like to have this for discussion between Mayor and Council.
I think you should go to the podium.
Oh, I can do that for you, but I don't, no, but I just, actually, it was sponsored by two of us, but the whole intent was, I don't know what everybody finds really important that we wanna pursue for the next calendar year. I don't know what's really important that Annie's been wanting to talk about or pursue or whatever, that hasn't come up on the agenda. Bob, Sharon, all of us. So I thought we would have a discussion, because it's the only place we can do it in open forum, to talk about, hey, what are some of the items that we wanna see put on the agenda, because ninety-nine percent of everything is staff-driven. Well, there's some things that we should drive onto our agenda that we wanna get on there. So I have a couple topics that I threw out that I thought were important to pursue.
Okay.
And then I wanted to know what each, everybody else agrees or doesn't agree, or what they wanna see pursued. You want me to go?
Go.
Oh, okay. So one of the first ones is, you know, and then I don't think there's a planning and zoning or county, or, uh, council meeting that goes without water being discussed. So, you know, it is the lifeblood of humankind and our community, and without it, we have no community. So I think we need to really push the study session to establish town's framework on strategies to ensure Chino Valley's water security and economic health. Whether it's our plan to communicate these complex water issues to the community, because without it, we can't get buy-in. Without buy-in, we're not gonna be able to get the funding for everything. It costs a lot of money. Um, part of the water, um, discussion is we wanna develop a comprehensive water strategy. In summary, what, you know, I'd like to learn, what is our town's water policy? Or do we actually have a formal policy? You know, we need to establish, you know, what, what are the future economic impacts that water is gonna have on our community and our economics? What are we doing for regional cooperation to ensure it's achieved? Cause we can't do it by ourselves. Um, we're approaching the fifth stage or the, the fifth management period in less than two years, and we still don't even have really any Chino representation. I understand that our water expert has applied and it's been sitting in limbo, but all the representation for the Prescott AMA is on from Prescott. And then, you know, are we looking at WIFA opportunities? Are we looking at, you know, stormwater collection processes? We need a three sixty assessment, and I think that we should all learn about everything that's going on. At the same time, it's educating the community, because it is complex, it is gonna be expensive, and without their buy-in, it's never gonna be pursued, and we're not gonna be able to pursue it. So I don't even know, and I've been digging, I don't really know what our formal town position is on all these things. So I think we just have, however, I'd like to know how ADWR actually determines, you know, the nine, what is it, the hundred-year, uh, guaranteed water supply. I'd like to actually have them come in and educate the public and myself included, hey, this is how we do it, this is the portfolio we use, this is the formula we use, whatever it is. Because we don't make decisions on the water distribution, ADWR. But I'd like to know if they're actually doing it correctly and not just running this dry. Another thing I was looking at, um, tighten some code enforcement procedures and loopholes that get us around, kinda like the outdoor storage area, recreational vehicles. Um, we have a problem, like, we, let's say I complain about the neighbor, they're doing rentals out of their RVs in the backyard. They go through the whole six to nine-month process. As soon as they get, they unplug the, the sewage. They, and town enforcement says, yep, you're in compliance now, and they leave. They plug it back in, you gotta go through the whole six to nine-month period process again. We need to tighten up those controls. Sound familiar? Uh, Erin educated me on that. It is. And it's just something that's ridiculous. It should be within maybe a twenty-four month period or during a twelve-month period. Um, language, uh, I'd like to see the public works director get, be able to have the teeth, he or she in the future or whatever, needs to enforce some of the historical and natural water, uh, flow issues that the county has, but our town code doesn't. You know, in other words, if he has the ability to hinder that or control it during development, but post-development, there's no teeth. And that was coming from our own attorney. He can't enforce certain things when a neighbor blocks the natural and historical water flows that backs up on people's property. But if you live in the county, they can. But because our town code doesn't have it, there's, he's powerless. So I'd like to see that, you know, have a meeting about how, what we have to change to empower that. Um, examine, I think we should examine the livestock authorized on single-family residential. It came up recently during that one, you know, the equine rescue. Everybody was kinda surprised why every town around in, in this county has an ordinance that governs the number of livestock you can have, but Chino doesn't. I think it's time that we, we pursue it. Doesn't mean we're gonna act right on it, but we can pursue what needs to be done and what we wanna adopt and go slowly through it. And then the last one, it's probably the most unpopular, but I see a big need for it. Maybe sometime this year, we discuss term limits. I think that's a big problem that we've faced nationally, is too many politicians stay in place for way too long. So I said, hey, why not we set the example and maybe self-impose, or the public consider term limits on us? What those are, I don't know. I'm just saying we should have the discussion. So those are the topics I thought were important that we should pursue in the next year.
I, I would like to add to that list. I think it would be nice to have a, uh, I don't know how even how to say this, so, but some kind of a training on the proper procedures for the meeting, like, does a vice mayor need to make all the motions? Can anybody make a motion? You know, tho, those kinda issues, you know, can anybody, you know, anybody can second, but you know, and then, uh, just get that education level up on that, for me. Bob? Got anything down there?
Roads and streets. That's a hot issue for everybody, no matter where they live. So, and I got on roads and street committee. So that would be my topic that I'm gonna hit on.
Okay. Annie? You need a minute. Eric? Tom?
I'm in favor of bringing forth any kind of training you want to, if you actually think we need it. I, I think there's some of the things you mentioned that are actually supposed to be taken care of by the water management person and by staff. So I'd like to see that investigated, and if they come up and say, hey, we already do that and we give it to you, then I don't think we need to beat the dead horse or the jockey, either one.
Just for clarification, I'm not suggesting these are training sessions. I'm just saying, I've been examining, because I'm trying to saturate myself into the understanding, the complexities of just, let's just say, water. We a lot of other communities have very, they, they, they may not have action items at the subsequent, uh, council meeting, but they have very thorough and detailed training, uh, discussions about water. Like, I just learned all about the water ranch north of us. What their plan is, all their schematics, all how it's gonna do it, how the development right there that they're doing now is playing into that big picture. How, you know, the whole schematic of how that whole water ranch is supposed to work. Okay, I would've never known that, just being up here. I had to go seek it. Well, we should share it, so everybody's aware. Um, what's our conservation plan? We need to discuss, are, is there gonna be a plan? Doesn't mean we're gonna act on it right away, but we have the discussion, maybe Mark's gonna be busier than normal. Um, you know, doing presentations or bringing other subject matters experts in to discuss, so that we all can come up with a formal idea and say, hey, we wanna pursue whatever that is. But we, we don't, we don't, I feel, and I've been on this council for over a year now, and I have been really saturating myself as much as possible, and I still like, feel like there is a huge void, because we don't talk about the town's framework of strategic planning for our town. And if we do, when? I haven't seen it, so I'd like to have a public, because we also gotta share this with the public, because it's complex. We gotta get buy-in, because we're inherently, the funding is gonna come from all them. And without their buy-in, it's never gonna be pursued. So we have to educate them as much as we're being educated, so that they say, okay, I'm willing to do whatever it is to, in order to pursue this, because without it, we have no community thirty years down the road. I'm not suggesting anything's imminent right now. Our water levels are not eminently a danger unless you have a well prior to nineteen ninety, maybe. But if we don't act in the very near future, it is a concern down the road. It's very much a concern down the road. And we have to act now for the future of tomorrow, you know? So, I just think we need to have more really detailed, comprehensive examination of all these, for all of our edification, as well as the public. So it's not really just training, it's comprehensive review and decision, which way are we gonna do, what do we wanna pursue?
So you'd like to expand our strategic planning meeting that we have every year?
That strategic planning didn't get into a fraction of the water.
So you wanted to expand it?
Yeah, but we had to do piecemeal.
No problem.
Yeah.
Make it a week-long retreat instead of a few days, whatever we need to do is all I'm saying. Yeah, you got that right.
Sher, you guys think, done?
Not at this time.
All right. Well, um, I think we could all think about this, and maybe if we come up with some topics, we could get them all to, uh, our town manager, and then, uh, we can go from there. Study sessions are fine. I don't mind, the water stuff, if we're gonna cover all that stuff, you talk about water, uh, it's gonna be three years getting through it, but it's okay. You know, there's a lot of, lot of information there, and that, of course, I exaggerate about three years, but there's a lot, lot.
You, you, you would have to be, it, it would have to be a presentation multiple times, you wouldn't do it as a single unit.
Sure. Yeah, he's over there.
He's.
His ears are burning back there.
Good job, Mark.
Get your Coleman Stubbe sleeping bag, you're living here now.
Okay, I'm gonna challenge the, uh, council. I'm gonna challenge the council to get their, their topics to, uh, the town manager by the, by the end of next week. Okay, so then we can get this addressed. Anything else?
And included in those topics, if there's a subject matter that is directly related to what a staff person or team does already, could you include that after you look at ours to make sure we're not, you know, I'm not planning on getting rid of the town manager or anything, so I'd like to know what she does in comparison to what we're asking for.
Mayor, Councilmember Armstrong, we'll definitely consolidate all the data and get a list back out for, um, for you all to review.
Cool.
All right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
That's it, that's it.
Cool.
Who said what down there?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion made to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned. Okay, we can all go home and come back and say. Oh, okay. Okay, so let me see your thing, try this. See, when I do my.